I'm sorry. You totally turned-
I don't think you understand me at all.
Is it too late to let Dave go first?
Could we have Dave Higley in here first, please?
Mayor's in charge.
He's got a gun, so.
The guy with the gun is in charge?
All right. The issue that must- each of the departments, other than the Parks Department that submitted a budget, submitted a budget that could function within the funds that are generated by the respective specialized taxes or the user fees, such as water and sewer. Departments that are funded out of general revenue in parks, we have projected expenses in excess of $260,000 more than the revenues we expect. So, at some point in this process, we have to figure out how to spend $260,000 less, well, or some amount less than what was requested. Or enhance the revenue by using either our cash carryover, which is currently projected at $300,000, or use some of our investments in certificates of deposit. So those are kind of the choices that are before us. And I think Tom has just expressed a desire to, rather than just arbitrarily say, take this, take that, that it would be some discussion about the principles involved in the decisions that we make for each, for the budget. I don't necessarily think the budget hearings with the department heads will get us to the final conclusion. I think the purpose of this is to find out kind of what the department director's priorities are, so that as we enter into a discussion about the overall budget, we can keep those priorities in mind in making the hard decisions that you have to make. So, I don't think we're going to walk away from tonight saying, okay, the police budget is X number of dollars. It's going to be, at what level can the police function to achieve the goals that you have for your citizens? And then that'll kind of guide us as to how we balance all of this out when we consider the needs of all the departments, including the Police Department.
Didn't you guys have a budget meeting that I missed? I was gone.
It was just a presentation of the-
That's all it was? So everybody just now looked at everything?
There was no discussion of any details.
Okay. Do we have money set aside for roads, sidewalks, and other infrastructures like that?
We- this budget-
And this budget?
This budget does not include any capital in the way-
So they don't have any money at all to fix any roads?
Not in the budget that is before you. If whatever you choose to do along those lines, you're going to have to figure out from where the money will come. Again, whether it comes from deductions we can make in other general fund-supported projects, or the use of the cash that we're carrying over, or the use of your investments in certificates of deposit, which are shown on the cover sheet.
All you can do is increase the revenue or cut the expenses.
There's no way you can increase the revenue.
So, you know, that's what we've got to figure out. If we're still going to do something with the roads, still fix the roads in this community, we've got to get some money somewhere. When you come up with a budget for the Police Department, you just use the same number from last year?
No, I used the budget figures that the department head, the police chief, submitted to me, which-
What page is that?
13, 14.
You also make note that there's nothing, if you notice, there's nothing in here for salaries, and there's nothing in here for health insurance?
Just a 10%.
There is 10%?
Yeah.
For health insurance, okay.
We were notified yesterday, or today? Yesterday, yes. That we can look forward to a 22%, was it 22 or 23? A 22 or 3% increase in our health insurance agreement, which maybe it- we don't know that. We won't know until they actually did it. But kind of based on our current census and claims experience, they're anticipating some rather high payouts from the health insurance in the coming years.
So you said there's 10 in here, so that leaves us-
13.
13.
And Pam's-
Or Pam, these guys-
Pam's provided an analysis of-
26?
It's okay.
Okay. So it's, we're short there already, the way it looks. Unless we go with a different plan, higher deductible, do whatever to do something to make up that difference in the increase in the insurance. So you've got 10 in here, right?
Yes. Eric's looks a little different because of the change in personnel and plans and stuff, but yes.
So we're working off of, right now, we're working off 858, 819 is what the Police Department-
Right. Which is, which is less than he had budgeted in the prior budget year.
Right.
Well, I'm going to restate this. Without a goal of the philosophy on how we're going to approach the budget, I think we have the cart here before the horse, that if we have a stated goal of, I know Ted, you're interested in finding money for streets, John, I know you're interested in, I know I'm interested in, and I don't really know what else is interested in. So if we were going to try to find some percentage of the overall budget, whether it was 5%, 10%, or bigger or smaller, that would give me guidance. And speaking and asking the department heads, you know, is our number a realistic number? So if we said we're going to reduce every budget, the whole budget by 25%, that's probably a very unrealistic number. But maybe 7.5%, 5%? It might, we might consider that a more a realistic number. So, I mean, I know that we can ask Eric a lot of questions, he's been to a lot of questions, and I'm sure you have excellent answers to respond to, because I know you've put an awful lot of effort into your budget. So what are we trying to do? What's our goal here tonight, right now?
I think number one, we don't want to, I don't think anybody wants to touch any CDs. We take the 260 out of the 400 that we got left.
It'd be like 140,000 that you'd have left to carry forward into 15.
That doesn't sound too good to me either. So obviously we're going to have, and then you're looking at probably a higher health insurance, again, unless we look at doing something different there to offset that. Maybe we just leave that at 10 and say, somehow, one way or the other, we're going to make up the other 10 or 15% either in raising the deductible, different plan, all right, let's just leave that, say we're going to make that up within it somehow. Okay? So, we need to, to, and then you've got the $90,000 that's going to come out of TIF, that's not going to be there available next year. So, I think that's something, we'll put it off till next year, okay, or consider it for this year, consider it this year too, I don't know, or at least look at that budget. It'll be there, it'll be there to spend if you want it to be. But I think it's something we consider for, it needs some consideration. So if you, I don't know that we can't not take some of money from the $400,000. It'd be nice to be able to not touch that, but that would mean we'd have to cut the budget by $260,000, just to break even and not do anything with streets.
That doesn't make much sense, then, does it? That doesn't make much sense.
No, I mean, it's, it's a-
Well, if, if, if I had to tell you what I thought you should do, is to interview each department, find out what your options are relative to each department.
Sounds good.
Kind of a, this level, this level, and this level. So that, that if you do have to make cuts, you're making cuts that are consistent with the priorities of the chief or the department director. You get a sense of what their options are. And after we've done that, and we're going to have that knowledge from each of them, we can sit down and address this kind of bottom-line question. But you don't want to just arbitrarily, it's like you say, talk about the buttons. You want to, you want to do what is consistent with your professional staff's opinion about how they can best operate their department. Because ultimately, you're going to hold the chief responsible for the performance of his department, whatever budget he gets. So-
Good enough answer for me.
Okay.
Can I start?
You can start.
Eric, I know that you give a lot of thought, and you're very detailed about your budget. As you can tell, there's somewhat of a consensus for trying to find some money. Our revenue's not growing, so we have to try and find some money. We'll have a limit, right? We're not going to find as much money for streets as we want. And no department head's probably going to get as much money as they want. But, and while you were looking at your budget, I know that you submitted your real numbers. But thinking, like somebody said at this side of the table, and asking you, what can you do without jeopardizing public safety? Do you have any thoughts or ideas that anything created that we might not be seeing, or you want to make like an opening statement?
Okay, sure. In my opinion, my job is to ensure that the citizens are safe, that the city's safe. Do that in a manner that makes us look good and makes you guys look good at the board. I think the way that we do that is treating our employees well. You know, I think that my job is as much defending my officers that work for me as it is discipline them when they do wrong. When I, when I started here, the department had a pretty bad reputation, badge-heavy officers, people that weren't treating the citizens well. And I have, I have made that my goal ever since I've been here, is to improve the reputation that the department has in the city. And I think that I've been pretty effective in that, too. Again, I think that that happens in a couple of ways. I think that we don't have a whole lot to offer, new hires here. We don't pay the salary that the Sheriff's Department pays. We don't have nearly the facility that the Sheriff's Department has. And it's hard to attract applicants past Bosler Drive to here. I think what we do have to offer is, is good management, good leadership, a good reputation is starting to help. We have good equipment, you know, we try, I've worked for departments before that you have to buy pretty well everything but your car. And not too many years before I came here, they were even providing their own car in this county. So, my typical interview process consists of, yes, this is an old building, yes, we're out of space, we do the best with what we can, but our benefit to you is to make sure that you have the equipment that you need to do your job, and to like your job. I know that every year, cars are a hot-button issue, you know, and I'm glad to see former Alderman Steyer here, because he was instrumental in helping, along with the mayor, getting a vehicle replacement program, so we're not buying three cars a year, or five cars a year, six cars a year. When I first started, I started in 2008 as chief. In 2007, they bought six cars on a lease. Well, then obviously, your six cars are going to age the same rate, and will need to be replaced at that rate. So we decided early on to try to, to try to hedge that a little bit and start replacing fewer cars more often. So we looked at two cars a year. So far, I think that it's been a beneficial program. Like I said, we don't have the salary that I would like to pay these guys. But I think that for a very small investment, we can get them something that they can be proud of. It's their own car, they're going to have more of an interest in it, they're going to take care of it, they're going to keep it clean, they're going to treat it well. You know, we've really worked on our maintenance issues, trying to, trying to make sure we're on top of that, make sure the cars are in good working order. The problem that we have, I mean, we could certainly run cars to 200,000 miles, but it kind of goes back to, one, what is the philosophy that this board has for what you want from your department? We can drive 1989 Caprices, but I don't think that you're going to have a proactive or professional department, and that's what we strive for, both in uniforms and the equipment that we carry, the equipment that we drive. We strive to exude a professional image to the citizens, both the people that live here and the people that are visiting here. We want it to be a positive image for, for the tourists and for the people that live here. So, we've replaced two cars a year. As you guys know, last year, we moved some money around and was, we were able to purchase one vehicle that would have been on this year's budget outright, we didn't have to lease it, with the, with the hope and understanding that we would replace the second car that would have been put in this, this year's budget for replacement. This budget does reflect the purchase of an additional vehicle, replacement of a vehicle. You know, I went through every line item. We get, just like here, you get the 2010 actual, the 2011 actual, the 2012 actual. I wanted to go through and compare that to where I was budgeted, because this doesn't reflect what we budgeted that year. And look at what we actually spent, line item by line item by line item, and tried to cut all the fat that I could. The totals that are here really fairly accurately represent the totals of what we've spent in years past, both from office supplies to fuel, which of course is something that we just kind of gamble with every year, because you don't know what the fuel prices are going to do. But we really, we really try to manage our budget well, and I consistently come in under budget every year, which, again, was the philosophy that was expressed to me when I was hired. Yes, we'll give you this money, yes, you should buy what you need, but don't, don't spend frivolously. So that's what we have, I've tried to do every year since I've been here, is, is return the money, as much money as I can, to the city. And my fear that sometime, that's going to come back and bite me, because I don't want the city to adopt a policy, well, we budgeted you $20,000 more than you spent, so if you're not going to spend it, we're not going to budget it. And I think that that's been pretty well explained over the years, that yes, we were budgeted, and yes, there was things that, that we could buy. Some of it is rainy day money, you know, because you don't know what's going to break or happen during the year. But I feel, especially my associations with the other department heads, is that everybody's pretty well on the same page there. I don't think you're ever going to see us go out the last month and spend $60,000, because that's what we're budgeted. With the understanding that you guys understand, that's why we're trying to return it. We want to spend it wisely, and we want to spend it well. The only things, as you see in here, there's a pretty substantial decrease in salaries. That's with the anticipation of losing Sergeant Pollak from our staff. I didn't want to get into it too much. Is this on camera? Is this okay? I don't want to go into the specifics on his, on his health situation, but he has expended all of his paid time off that he has from us. We've donated the time that we can donate by ordinance to help him. So he's on family medical leave now, pending the approval of all of his, of his other situations that he's, that he's applied for. So there's, there's some decrease in the, in the salary line item for that. The increases that I put in, in addition to what we have, the equipment that we have, not the dollar-wise, I did budget for an additional car, which would replace a 2007 Impala with about 90,000 miles right now. By the time the replacement comes in, it should be near 100,000, if not over. Additionally, I put in a request for, to replace all of our in-car camera systems. This would be a recurring cost, it'd be a lease similar to our cars. The benefit to that for us, the cameras themselves come with a two-year warranty, but with the lease, they will, they will warranty those the life of the lease, so it'll get us an additional three years warranty, and it, you know, we wouldn't have the $50,000-
Now let's stop there for a minute.
Okay.
I want to get to the camera issue, but first of all, I want to say that I think this board, at least from my limited experience, understands that you don't penalize departments that have been judicious in this expenditure of their money by reducing their budget for next year. We projected a $200,000 carryover in our budget. Because our department heads, I think partially because they sense that if they, if they don't spend a dollar, they aren't going to be penalized for having saved it, we were able to carry over $400,000. So, I think it's an important philosophy that we, that we should be keeping in mind.
And I think it is one of multiple philosophies on budget.
Yeah. The, the, now, when you and I discussed the cameras, you told me the problems of our existing cameras, I wish you'd express that a little more.
Yeah.
And then talk about the possibility of alternative funding for those cameras.
Okay. I would also encourage anybody that has any questions, you know, I'm going to talk about MDTs and SROs and a lot of acronyms that I use daily, that if you guys don't understand, please ask. I would be happy to, to give you a tour of a patrol car, what it actually consists of, the equipment that's in there, why we need replacement, or why I would encourage-
Just use the full name for the time.
Right, I will. Well, and right now, I'm just talking about in-car cameras, that's pretty, pretty self-explanatory. But, again, I would like to show you the setup that we have, if you guys ever wanted to take that opportunity. Right now, we have utilized a company, it's called Digital Ally, for our in-car camera systems. It has served us fairly well. In recent, within the last year, they have changed their maintenance and service availability. They've changed their criteria for that, and require a minimum upfront price of, I think it's like $350, just to send something in. So we have a couple that have failed us, and so I am, I'm looking at the possibility of more failing us in the future, and trying to, trying to kind of streamline that a little bit, and get a consistent camera that's future-friendly for all the officers, no matter what car they jump in, we try to set them up as closely uniformed as we can. So this would, this would purchase a, a new in-car camera system for the eight patrol cars that we have, including the two supervisors' cars. That would not include my car, the assistant chief's car. Typically, like today, if I'm working and covering calls, I end up driving one of the regular patrol cars, so that I have all the bells and whistles that I need. Probably doesn't sound well, I mean, I'm not, I'm not supplying bells and whistles, but the equipment, the mobile data terminals have docking stations and things like that, it just really helps with the, with the performance. So, with that being said, I am looking at replacing a Digital Ally brand in-car camera that we have, eight of now, six of now, and, and go to a car camera that's called something else that has left my brain right now. What is that?
Better Warranty.
A Better Warranty, yes. It will still be a user-friendly camera, and it's WatchGuard, WatchGuard brand. Now, understanding, you know, we went into this budget realizing that there's not a whole lot of money extra, and I would like to, again, express that we took that into consideration when preparing our budgets. In talking to the state prosecutor attorney, Carl Kinskey, they have a law enforcement restitution fund that may be able to aid in, in the purchase of the in-car camera systems, because it is an evidentiary item that we use both to capture arrests, we use it administratively to handling complaints that we get. Typically, from my experience, the in-car cameras have been way more valuable than the dollar amount that we put on them, because the first time somebody comes in and says, hey, your guy slapped me around, your guy was rude to me, whatever the complaint is, my first, my first instinct, even without watching the video, is to play the video for them. We see it at the same time together, and every time I've done that, they've been like, oh yeah, I didn't remember that I said that, you know? And the complaint is unsubstantiated, and it, and it helps the city, and it's, I think it's a great benefit to the city. I think it's a great benefit to me as an administrator, and Carl Kinskey thinks that it's a great benefit to, to his criminal prosecution. He doesn't have the funds to purchase them outright or supply the whole thing, but he has indicated, and I don't know what, to what extent, that he would be willing to approach his board. There's another board situation that would require approval, but he would make application for those to, to help and assist with the, with the expenditure of that. So, that is, that is an option, and certainly one that we would have to sit down and discuss the logistics of.
Does the Sheriff's Department and surrounding counties, other towns, do they have them?
The in-car cameras?
Yeah.
Yes. In fact, two of the ones that we have now, we got from the Sheriff's Department, we have two older WatchGuards right now, and they, they went to all Digital Ally, which is the company that we're starting to get away from because of the maintenance costs. But it is, I would say, almost an exclusively universal program right now, because, because of the liability, because of, you know, both pursuits or, or car crashes, or, you know, just administrative issues, that we would, that we would have some potential of disciplinary action. But also, like I said, the criminal prosecution, it's getting harder and harder to even make a case without, without that being documented. There's, there's a new case law that came down within the last couple of years that requires interviews and whatnot to be, custodial interviews to be videotaped, and this system would actually allow that real-time, you know, if you, if you get a spontaneous utterance in a car or something from an accident that happened, it would just be a good, a good program.
Where do you have that in your budget?
That is in small equipment.
85, 12,000?
Yes, 12,000.
Okay. Eric, how many officers in your proposed 2014 budget in that, in that figure, how many officers does that include?
That's retaining the 10 officers, and one would be considered part-time police clerk. Now, with her doing the double duty with court clerk, we split the salary between us and the judicial line item, so it's, it's half of our police clerk's salary.
So like, our overall expenses don't go down, but that particular line item in his budget was reduced by the split?
What was your first, this is kind of, and I apologize, I should know the answer to this, but what was the first year budget you worked on, you submitted?
When I came in in 2008, I came in in October, so it was a completed budget, so I operated under that budget. So 2009 was first-
Answer my question, thank you.
How many vehicles was I missing that?
It's the one above, small equipment, 845. And that is, we have 10 vehicles. So one per full-time officer. And I have a breakdown of those with the mileage, if I would help you familiarize, if you'd like to see that.
So, I'm sorry.
845, small vehicle equipment.
How many vehicles that-
That's just purchasing one, and I'm asking for an increase for one.
I'm looking for our overall vehicle cost.
That, that would be the overall vehicle cost, for purchase. That includes the leases that we're already-
I meant for, for the total 10 cars that we-
Right, we have, we have two cars on lease from '10, two on lease from '11, and two on lease from 2012. lease from 2012, so it did step up.
In terms of overall cost, you're looking for, you've got 9,000 for maintenance.
Yeah. Where's, I'm looking for, where's vehicle cost?
Lease cost per, each year, per everything.
I would have to provide that, I can get a copy of that.
Where's it at in your budget?
It's a, it's an overall, it's that 49,000 that's there.
Okay, alright.
Forty-nine five oh four.
Well, okay, so that's.
What is the one vehicle?
That covers, I'm sorry.
What do you anticipate one vehicle would cost?
Seven thousand lease per year.
So that 49, seven of it is the new vehicle?
Yes.
That's the question I was getting at.
So what is the, and the vehicle that's replacing is also under lease?
No, it's paid, it's paid for now. It was leased in 2007, but that lease has, has come.
So should we not purchase a vehicle this year? We're not talking about saving the 49,000, we're talking about saving the 7,000.
That's where I was trying to drive it back to. It's a small number, what I was getting at.
Then is that a hard number? The 7,000?
It ain't like last, this last time, we bought a vehicle and it was another 12,000 or whatever to upgrade it or put all the stuff on it.
The problem, that is including the upfitting costs. The problem that we had last year was we had, we had accepted the proposal from Ford for the trade-in value of the cars, but then when we, when we backed out of that and had to sell them separately, then we had to do the budget amendment to include that because it was included in the original proposal, the new cars less the trade-in value, which would have gone into the equipment. So every year that I've made a proposal for vehicles, it's included the car and the upfitting equipment and this, this year would be no exception. And we certainly reuse as much of the equipment as we can from the old cars, but there's some things that just have a light, the siren box, the, you know, the lights, to some extent, you know, we use as much as we can, but there is some, some outfit cost.
You had, I've got a series of questions for you. Starts at the top. If you had an unlimited budget, how many police officers would you recommend for the city?
I don't know that I could give you a hard answer on that. I mean, right now.
And could you see, are needing more than 10?
I could see needing a full-time detective. We are increasing to include a school resource officer, which will be no expense to us because it's going to be a school, school employee, but at our direction. So I don't see needing a fund of that, as long as the school will do that. But I would certainly see a full-time detective being very beneficial to the city. Right now, those are duties that myself and the assistant chief split and usually work in cooperation.
So, so your answer then is one more?
Yes. And when I first started in 2008, we were budgeted for 11 officers plus our police clerk and sacrificed one officer with the understanding that the additional officers would get a raise, which actually didn't happen. But it was, it was budgeted for 11 when I first came here.
Martin, can I tag onto your question very briefly? How many officers do you try to have on duty at any given time?
I usually don't answer that. But I can discuss that with you. It's not the 10 officers that is typically believed to be.
We don't want anybody who are Robin Fort Knox and tell them there's only three officers.
Right, right.
Well, but let's talk about kind of the dynamics of your staff. You know, what hardships might be experienced should there be a reduction in force with scheduling problems and whatever else occurs to you?
We typically will, we adopted the philosophy, two is one, one is none. So any felony situation, any domestic situation, two officers, it's two officer response as long as there's, there's two assailants, if there's three assailants, you know, then we want, you know, three or four officer response. So right now, obviously, we've got two positions that are being held, not being held, but we're still paying a salary for, but not able to fill the positions during that time. I know I've increased my weekly hours considerably working, working, covering the road, you know, we've got vacations and whatnot, so I would think that a reduction in staff would be extremely detrimental to at least the efforts that we are able to provide now and that, you know, as I discussed in the beginning, you know, some of our reputation when I first got here was, was that of just a call-taking agency. People, if they had their house burglarized, got to where they knew if they called the police, it was going to be a report on file and that was as far as it was going to go. There would be no investigation, there would be no, no real satisfaction or conclusion to the case, other than that it would be a report on paper somewhere. So a lot of my goals since I've gotten here and having Jason Crump has been a valuable asset to that. He's a great detective and a great administrator, but a lot of my philosophy and goals since I've been here is to reduce or really turn over that reputation to one that people actually want to call because they know that there's going to be a successful resolution to the case and I think that we have accomplished that. But I've seen a huge reduction just since January, since we've been short-staffed in the amount of time that we can dedicate to investigating cases because we're covering the road and the other administrative roles that we, that we currently have. Again, it's, it's all boiled down to the philosophy that the board has and what, what the board wants as its representation of the city, but, you know, as I've said in years past, you know, my job is to manage the budget that you guys provide for me and we'll continue to do that as, just as best as we can.
You know, on the other side of the coin, like Martin said, if you had an unlimited budget or you had an increased budget, what you would do? Say each department was requested to take a seven and a half percent cut in their budget. Now, I'm pretty sure you said that you wouldn't get rid of personnel if you had to do something like that.
That would be my last option.
Right.
What would be your first options?
We're looking at, to your ability to perform and manage your department.
Again, there's, there's two sides of the coin on that. One is, is ease of scheduling and ease of work on the administrators as far as, as far as consistency between the squads. We would certainly look at, at other options. Right now, we work 12-hour shifts, we need to look at another type of shift to try to maximize the effectiveness. From my experience, 12-hour shifts is really the best way to do that with, with the shortest number of people, but we would certainly look at other options, either 10s or 8s or whatever the case may be. It kind of goes hand in hand with the, with the cars, you know, some of that is, is just mathematics and as far as the number of cars you replace a year to be consistent and fair for everybody. I think that, you know, again, if you guys came back and I had a seven, seven percent decrease, I would cut everything that I could cut prior to staff, but if it came to that, again, I guess we'd just look at a different scheduling and, and I would anticipate working a lot more myself.
Right now, you've got 10 officers and you're really working with eight, trying to fill a slot, slot, which you normally.
Yeah, right now, I'm at seven with two on vacation, so.
And so your weekend hours are.
It's going to get better though. I mean, summertime, people go on vacation.
Right, right, but.
But even so, he's got.
You have a sickness, you know, you can't anticipate.
No, I mean, I don't think anybody, I'm sorry, I don't think anybody at the table wants to jeopardize public safety.
Right.
I mean, if somebody picks their phone up, they want the police to shut it.
And we understand that.
And nobody is encouraging that, but at the same time, we're going to look really hard at every individual department's budget and say, "Listen, that's going back to that general philosophy of what do we want to do? If we're okay with having a coasting year without trying to do any street improvements, we leave everything alone." This is going to be hard, I think some hard, challenging discussions involved here.
I understand.
Your cars will last longer if we have better streets.
Yeah, but if you have the shiniest street, no car to get there, then it's.
There you go. You've got to balance it out.
And then the cricks could go faster.
Exactly, exactly.
I think the town's grown the last 10 years.
But I don't think that's the police department's fault.
No.
It's just, everybody talks about years ago, how, what they had, six officers, one town, you know, you had two officers.
Well, John, we can't go back there.
Oh, I know, I agree, but I'm.
Well, you know, I, yeah, I hear.
We're going to have to start.
For 80 years, the town has been between 4,000 and 4,500 people, up and down a little bit, and here we're 4,400 people. And the response I usually get, and I'll let Eric speak for himself, is times change. So why don't you talk about why it's different now?
Well, I think one is just an overall respect for authority in general. I think if you could talk to police officers in the 70s the way people treated, talked to us now, you would be handled significantly differently. I don't think that, I mean, I'm not saying that officers in the 70s didn't have disrespectful or aggressive people, but I think it has certainly, it has certainly increased with internet and everybody having a cell phone and everybody watching everything that the officers do. They want to get in a confrontation, they want it to be videotaped and they want to sue the city for everything they have. I think on the flip side of that, the second we send a one officer into a serious situation and they get hurt or filled in the line of duty, the amount of salary that we paid is going to be nothing compared to the liability that we've put them in and also the loss of, I mean, nobody wants to deal with that. No city, no administrator, no fellow officer wants to deal with, with the loss of an officer, especially at the expense of the appropriate backup. I don't, I don't feel, I can't stress this enough, I don't think that we have an overage of officers, I don't think that we have an abundance of officers. I don't think right now that we spend any more than we absolutely have to, for the most part. I mean, there are, there are certain luxuries I'm sure that we could, that we could do without, we could drop another phone line, we could, we could drop half the cars and share a car, but I think that it gets back to, the morale of our officers directly affects how they treat the citizens and how they do their job and, you know, I have a hard enough time now attracting officers here over other departments, but, you know, what the small incentives that we try to give them to keep their morale up, I think is what, is what keeps officers here and enables us to have the reputation to attract new officers. Again, you know, whatever budget you guys decide to give us, we'll operate under, but I hope that you realize or understand that, that we don't go into this wastefully, we don't go into this with a huge wish list and frivolous requests. The staff that we have and the equipment that we have, I think that we can justify every, every line item of. So again, you guys are the boss and certainly do with whatever you provide us, but I think that we have a strong, a strong police force right now. I think it's the best that the county's probably ever had as far as the relationship between us and the sheriff's department and the relationship that we have to be able to work side by side and the communication that's there and I think that that is enabled by the staff that we have right now and the number of officers that we have right now that enables us to be administrators and network and also encourage our officers to be proactive and continue to raise the bar.
Eric, I want, you know, for myself, and I'm speaking for the board, appreciate the job that you do every year on a budget and you do, you end up coming in under budget every year. I think that you've been police chief and I appreciate that, so I know you're not just wasting money or, I know you keep track of it the best that you possibly can and do the best job that you can and I appreciate that. And the other thing is, you know, this is, I guess, my 11th year and, you know, certainly in the last three or four, I don't hear about the police department to speak of every once in a while you do, but usually there's certainly another side to the story, but, and the less I hear, to me, no news is good news when it comes to that, so, yeah, I kind of agree with, you know, I think your relationship with the county is, it's definitely the best it's been as far as our police department since I've been mayor. So all of those are good things and I appreciate that. One question that I had, and I think I even brought it up the other night, you're 70,000 on your dispatching fees, you're pretty confident that I, that that's going to go down?
No, I think that that reflects where it has gone down.
I mean, from where you're, you're 90, you know, you're 78 now.
We were at 104 in 2010, we were at 78 this year. We just went through all the percentages with the county commission as far as usage between us, the ambulance district and the sheriff's department. We were, we were, last year, we were assessed or invoiced for 27% of the call volume. With bringing on the MDTs and handling a lot of our mule stuff ourselves, they had the mobile data terminals on our cars, we're down to 22% as of halfway through the year and anticipate staying pretty close on track to that. So we've gotten an affirmation from the county commission, regardless of what they get billed from St. Francis County 911, our, our usage, our invoice will reflect the, our usage, it'll be.
Maybe, I guess, I meant to go back and read that of what I thought they said, or at least what I thought the paper said with, and like Gary said, they were going to leave those percentages alone for this year.
Well, and I think there's two issues here. There's, there's, because we don't contract with St. Francis County, we contract with our county.
Correct.
Whatever agreement they have with them as far as the percentages and where they're at, our agreement is with them and we're going to, I think that we should insist on paying the actual usage that we, that we, the resources that we take from, from that agency and my understanding with the, with the commission is that was completely understood and now we have the system in place to be able to track that accurately. You know, it was a guessing game when it was over here because of the record keeping that was, that was done or not done here at this facility, excuse me, but with the, with the record keeping and the CAD and the call logs that we have from St. Francis County, it's very easily tracked and I think it's going, again, I think that it would, either way, it happens if we use 25%, you know, I've, I've put in a little bit of extra there just in case our percentage does go up, but I think that that's an accurate, an accurate usage.
Well, you know, and again, that's, I know that was one of your justifications for getting it, and I know one of the reasons the board voted for it was to do just what it did.
Right.
So, you know, the $2,400 in the fee for the cars.
Yeah.
Is very well justified.
And I didn't mention that, yeah, this, up until now, our air cards have been funded by grants. The last time I applied for a grant, they funded it, but kind of gave me the caveat that this is really something that probably ought to be a budgeted item. So I have, I have increased line items to include, at one point, if you remember, a couple of years ago, chargers started charging this for our internet, which was free before, that always came out of my telephone line item. I just split that into a separate internet line item just for tracking purposes and I also added a request for the air cards for the MDTs, which is 1,400, but again, with the cost savings, I think that we're getting from dispatch, I think that more than paid for itself.
Anything else for? Alright, thanks, Eric.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Page 20. Get up, Dave.
Too much, too much?
Hey, how many, how many people in your department in the salary number?
With, uh, means four.
And the two part, or the two summer helps included, not salary.
It was two summer, yeah.
So. With no transfer from the general fund and with no capital improvements budgeted in his figures. Off of the, the, the revenue sources are six hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty. And Dave projected total expenditures of six hundred and seventeen, four forty-five. So the general operating budget that he has submitted is, is balanced. It includes.
Your top number.
No, I think, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, six forty-eight. Well, it's still balanced.
It does.
It's, yeah.
Let him start again, please, I'm, I'm not finding.
All right, six forty-eight, seven thirty.
Where's that at?
On the first page.
Page twenty.
Twenty.
Total revenue.
Total revenues.
Mine says.
Six forty-eight.
Before like.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Revenues.
Thank you.
Then two pages later, on page twenty-two, you'll see that he has projected total expenditures of six seventeen, four forty-five. In that, he has some equipment purchases. Dump truck, two spreaders, and a used pickup. That's that eighty thousand dollar figure.
No, 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 god, no.
So any, any expenditures outside of this budget will come from either not making equipment purchases or transferring from general fund.
And that's not using the special river fund, right?
That is not using the special river funds. No, that's, I'm sorry, that is in there.
It's in the revenue. Maybe you took it back out and dropped it down. See, that was supposed to be earmarked or something, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's gotta be in budget, no matter what, it's gotta be. We don't have to use it all, right?
But even taking it out, he still has revenues in excess of project, projected expenditures.
Why does the street department have a CD? CD reserve, what's that mean?
Well.
Page twenty, mid, mid level there.
The, it's money that comes in from the county road tax that wasn't spent at some point and was, the, the cash was used to purchase a CD. Now, what, it doesn't mean you can't spend it.
What do you mean you can't spend it?
Well, we can cash in CDs, spend in our trucks.
I guess, from a accounting principle standpoint, why would a department have their own CD? So, I'm sure it makes sense, I just don't understand it. Why does the, why does the street department have a CD?
Earmark. And my, my answer was, you can't mix the, the road tax funds with the general fund, so you couldn't put it together with money we.
So it can't go, it's gotta stay.
Segregated from any of these other funds.
So it was determined at some point that we would save that money instead of spending that money? Okay, that, that, I just was, I didn't, I, my disconnect was you couldn't transfer, so, thank you.
And that means you can't spend it?
Pardon?
It's it, it doesn't mean it's not available for you to use.
Right, gotcha. There's fifty-six thousand dollars for the street work right there if you want, if we, you know, determine to spend it. Problem solvers though.
What are we gonna do with?
Now, look at your list here, you got your list.
Making your list a little worse, please. Yeah, well, there's one or two on there you can work on. How much do you get on motor fuel tax?
Projecting a hundred and twenty thousand.
No, I mean, as far as, is that a per gallon price on that tax, or how does that work?
State throws down.
We get that from the state and I don't even know that we have, how they figure that.
I think the motor fuel tax is part of the per gallon tax.
Well, yeah, so I was thinking, I was just curious, what if, you know, half a cent or a quarter cent or?
Oh, I don't know what it is.
Any, you know.
It's.
It's whatever it is on the farm they send us.
Well, I mean, was that?
But I'll.
It's that special tax that was voted in and we get our share of it when it goes to the state and comes back. Um, it's countywide tax, right? It's not a city tax.
That's, uh, I was, another question to add.
But it also keeps you from adopting another transportation tax. You can't, the city can't have, you couldn't come up with another, we couldn't even ask the voters to approve another city-specific fuel tax or transportation tax without raising the whole.
No questions?
That then?
David, carry on with Teddy's question to Chief Bennett. If, if you were asked to reduce your budget by seven and a half percent, what would be your thoughts?
If you all remember, uh, I guess, three years ago, uh, my, we cut our budget by quite a bit and there was nothing in here that I could cut. I mean, everything, if you looked through here, it was bare bone. There's only a couple of things that's been increased, it's only because we had to, like the, for special services, the five thousand extra dollars, that's for the brush site to be all the way every year. I mean, yeah, we could, uh, let it build up for a year, but then what's gonna cost us ten thousand the next year? I can't, other than you not letting me have this equipment on my wishlist, I can't proceed cutting anything. I mean, we just, Martin was just talking to me yesterday about Portis Street, that ditch sewer, that wasn't in my budget, so I have to buy chemicals, you know, to kill, kill them, uh, weeds through that ditch line that, you know, we didn't have before. So, I mean, that was, that's above and beyond, so I'd say. I really can't see, I mean, I've been working with just the bare minimum for all these years, you know. Uh, I'd say I don't get what I want, I get what I need. I mean, yo, yeah, I'd love to have a brand new dump truck there and all this, but, you know, I know we don't have a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, so I'll settle for a forty thousand dollar truck, I'll be happy with it.
But one of the scenario was that the city lost seven and a half percent revenue. And there was no choice.
If it would come down to that, yes, I'd go through every line item and cut what I could, you know?
Okay, so you would look at it again and try to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely, you know, I mean, if you told me I had to, I'd take it back tomorrow and come back, okay, I, you know, but then the services are gonna.
Again, but without capital expenditures, he would be talking about forty-three thousand dollars, which he, I assume would go, well, I just won't buy the equipment I think I need.
But you would, you need them spreaders.
I gotta have spreaders, no, they're shot. They're, they're life expectancy's seven years, I got eighteen years out of them. I mean, when we go to pressure work, someone, yeah.
When you, when you trade, man, how much you could get?
I'm sorry.
So, uh, how much are the spreaders?
Uh, they're fifteen thousand a piece.
So that eighty, thirty thousand is for spreaders?
Yes.
Seventy thou, forty thousand is for the, the dump truck? And ten thousand was for used pickup?
I mean, I'll settle for two thousand dollar pickup, I don't care. You know, I just threw a number in there.
I wanna, I wanna ask you a question, it may sound silly, maybe it is. You know, I work around a lot of industry all over the place, in big facilities, uh, in a mine today in Illinois, and, uh, they, they have to run people around to different areas with small tools, right? Like a, like a big welder, big air compressor, and they're running these little bitty, not for the highways, little trucks. You've seen them around, they sit around here every now and then, and, uh, you know, they, they got a little bitty engine in them and they would get good, would it be just ridiculous for us to say, is that a viable option for something we could use here in St. Genevieve? I mean, if you're sending one guy and you're sending two kids out with the weed eater.
I mean, those things look like golf carts with a bed on them.
They're a little more substantial than that. I mean, at, at the mine today, they got, they got big welders that you'd have on a mechanic's cutter. I mean, you know, a couple thousand pounds, and they got little lift beds, is that just a ridiculous idea, or is, is that something that would be worth, worth looking at? I mean, instead of getting one truck, you get three of those.
Well, four. Yeah, that would work, but like I say, a lot of times, like, and with the crazy weather it's been, you know, we get called out, I mean, for tree limbs and stuff, which, you know, every time we have a storm, we, we pick up lots of tree limbs, how much can you put in one of them?
Well, I know, you're talking about replacing every vehicle you have.
I don't have many, Tom.
But if you're looking to get a ten thousand bucks for a used vehicle, yeah, I don't know what these things cost, but if you could buy two of these, I'm asking you to be creative in your thought process, and you tell me that's just silly, I can live with that.
Well, no, you know, I, I see your point, but most of the time when we send people out, we send two people out, 'cause like I said, I, I'm not gonna send one person out and clean a ditch with a weed eater, you know, 'cause safety issue, you know?
I won't even talk about how many people are trying to cut in the dirt behind that concrete on Serre Street that was that wide and that deep. That was quite an operation.
Yeah.
I don't know, I did, I think that to stretch our budget, we're really gonna have to try to be creative. And, and being creative isn't necessarily, it's being cheap isn't, isn't being creative. You know, I, I don't know, I think we should ask questions like that and look at it and spend an hour looking at them on the internet and say, that would never work there. Or say, huh, huh.
I'm not saying I won't try, you know, we, we could try.
Well, I just, I'm just asking if you maybe look at it and see if it's even a possibility.
I mean, can two people fit in these vehicles? Because some of them, that's only a one-man vehicle.
I think that coming in all shapes and sizes is all possible.
I guess the next question part is, I don't think they're street legal.
Well, and is that something that we could do by ordinance to make illegal to drive on the streets? And not, not a discussion for this forum, but I think those are the kind of things, when somebody says to you, what can you do to cut your budget by seven and a half percent? And you say, nothing, that's no good, you know what I mean? I realize, well, that's what we're asking you. I realize that this is a real number, right? And you got nothing extra.
No.
Anybody driving around could see you got nothing extra.
Exactly.
But if you're, I've been on both sides of this fence, when some of my boss comes in and says, I want you to increase sales by ten percent and decrease your budget by fifteen percent. It's not, he's not even asking for my opinion, he's telling me this is what you're gonna do. And it's crisis mode, and so you have to get real creative.
If that's what you're telling me to do, I'll do it, you know?
Come on, Tom, you got him crying.
No, and I'm not saying that we could, we could do that, Dave, but we have to, to squeeze a little more blood out of his turnip. We're gonna have to get very creative and we can't just build walls and say we can't. And we, we may end up with, well, very unpleasant things. And maybe that's what the difference is between fixing streets and cutting budgets, is how unpleasant it would be.
If you look at my mosquito budget, I cut it down, you know, quite a bit, you know, 'cause I.
I'm not beating you up at all.
Well, I understand that, you know?
I'm just saying, what, what, what if?
But is that the case?
Yeah.
I mean, if it comes down to that, you tell me that, I, you know, I will, you know? But like I say, you know, the stone gravel and, you know, we cut the budget down a little bit on that because like I said, we don't furnish alliance with our, our rock no more, they buy their own.
You would just have less to work with than you deal with.
Exactly, you know, I mean, we can, I've been doing this since I've been here, that, you know, I've been working whatever you guys tell me to do, you know?
That's a reasonable answer, right?
You give me a hundred dollars, I'll do what I can with a hundred dollars.
But the, the reason for these meetings is for them to ask you and for you to express your priorities.
Exactly.
So that if it, when it comes time to decide what needs to go, they have some sense of what's most important to you and, and, and I think that's kinda Tom's frustration, is you, you basically said it's all important to me.
Well, it is, I mean, you're like sign repair, I mean, I've asked for the last three years for money for sign repair that we're supposed to do and you guys keep kicking it out, you know? Basically, that sign repair is because we're supposed to comply with, and we've been doing that as we go.
Yeah, but the decision they have to make is, in order to give Dave a dump truck or the sign repair is, I have to not employ a police officer. So I send somebody home.
And I'll make my dump trucks last, you know?
You know, that's, that's, that's the balance.
I mean, I'll, I'll do what I have to do.
That's what really, what I'm driving for is, we need to understand the consequences of our actions. I mean, it's real easy, okay, everything, ten percent, let's go home, all right? But what are the consequences of that? Everyone wants more streets, we all do, hands down. But if the consequences are too high.
Exactly.
Maybe we have to just live with the streets we've got for a year or, or have very few capital projects where we spend a lot of money.
But you need maintenance, I mean, there's, you can't not have.
Not, not taking maintenance, I'm just talking about capital projects.
A new street, a new tear out, replacement, you know, it's kind of.
That's kind of where I'm going. I'm not, right now, I, I can't tell you that I'm in favor of seven and a half percent cuts or ten percent cuts. I can't tell you that I'm not in favor of just leaving this alone and coasting a year on streets. We're not gonna have, we're gonna make a bad, we're gonna make the best bad decision available to us. So understand the consequences of, you know, I want everybody, including me at this table, to realize if we say, Dave, you gotta cut ten percent, what's that gonna do to you? That's gonna be.
It's gonna hurt, but I'm good.
Brutal, it's gonna be brutal, right? So that's what we gotta weigh out in the end, is, is the same thing with what we was talking with Chief Bennett. Man, I mean, you go pulling a rug out from under public safety, wow! You know, but at the same time, can we, can we screw it down just enough to create some funds to spend some money over here?
I can, that's what you want, I can go back and cut some of this, but you know, but.
Not asking you to do that now, just what your general feelings are. If you really had to cut seven and a half percent, uh, I think what you said was, you know what, we're gonna deal with it, it was, we buy a little less rock, we do a little less of this and, and we.
What I have to do, you know?
Not, so are there any big, is there anything big and significant that you would say, if I had to do that, right here, right there, or is it really just gonna be pieces off everything?
If it'd be up to me, I'd cut mosquito pollen out. It's, to me, it's a waste of time, a waste of money, 'cause we're, we're, we can't afford to do it properly.
Where is that?
That's twenty thousand.
No, no, it's twenty thousand, do we have any way to gauge its effectiveness?
I have a question.
Probably, probably, people complaining right now.
I didn't, I didn't.
I mean, there's no metrics, or a hard sell.
You know, doing, if you just following and dropping in the streets when you're spraying.
No, we don't have to bring the streets we bred after we bought.
You can kill whatever mosquitoes come into contact with the liquid and time you spray. You don't, you don't change the life cycle, you know, keep the ones that be in, just wipe out the ones you can.
Most of them do, but, uh, in order to do it properly, you have to, like, you know, a town of our size is supposed to be twice a week. We don't have that budget, you know?
Well, plus you need vector control. I mean, we need, we need mosquito police, we need to find the places where there's stagnant pools of water, we need to get citizens to fix their own problems and fix our problems where they exist. We've got water standing behind the old black mist shop and the old Gattery Creek that it's just breeding mosquitoes left and right. But, you know, you, you, there, there are, there are hundreds of those.
Actually, I went to a, a school for mosquitoes and, uh, it was an eight-hour course and you're supposed to have somebody there that, that goes out, like Martin just said, you, you set out your traps, you pick them up, you bring them in, you count them and you sex them.
And figure out what sex they are.
And then you take them to, you either take them to Cape or you put, uh, dry ice and you ship them down there every day, and this is an everyday thing. I mean, it's not a one-person deal. So in order for us to do this, we'd have to employ at least two people to do this, you know? I mean, it's not a, just, we'll spray, no, you set the traps out, you have, oh my god, the stinky stuff that you gotta put in or draw them. We made some up, we tried it, yeah, we don't want to do them.
So, so what we do, we back chemicals and we spray and we kill the ones we can come into contact with.
Yeah, well, we can't.
But is it doing any good?
I know, I think they've been pretty bad this year and he's been spraying, so I'm not too sure we're doing much. We're not out there on the streets sweeping up dead mosquitoes when he's done. So I'm just not too sure how.
You're not gonna find any injections on this board.
It only killed, that's what we were looking for.
Yeah, something like that.
That's what, that's exactly right.
Right there.
And maybe, maybe you're completely, take all, take part of it. That, that's what we were talking about there.
I, I really think that'd be a cost saving, I know that we'll all take a hit.
You got overtime there involved in that.
Exactly, four hours overtime every week.
Yeah, it's not just the twenty, it's not just the twenty thousand that you're budgeting for the chemical, you've gotta look at the manpower too and the wear and tear on your vehicle. manpower, too, and the wear and tear on your vehicle.
That's a creative process. That's a good idea.
Would you still do the biscuits there?
Yeah. Well, we, you know, that's, that's one of the big things. But like this, you know, this year has been exceptional, because we had a lot of rain. You don't really want to throw them in the storm drains, and all of a sudden it rains and it washes them away. And so you lose some money there. And whenever we, we, that's why we bought the four-wheelers, so we could put them in the fields over there, in the big field. But, or not big field, but anyway, by the, by the old dump. But whenever the farmer puts his stuff in, it's hard for us to get in there to do that. Actually, I even went and bought a $2 slingshot.
Really?
So we could put them out there.
That's pretty creative, Tom.
That's very creative. That's what I'm looking for, right?
I found the $2 somewhere.
That's, that's.
I didn't look through the wire. I have $2 slingshot in there.
You can make a potato. I'm waiting for a $15 slingshot.
You probably could have got some six-year-olds to do it for free.
I really wouldn't have thought a slingshot was more than $2.
It works.
Toby's going to put that to paper.
What's, what's going on with Porter Street?
I got a call from the engineer today, and he expects him to be out there Friday to start putting in the storm sewer pipe.
Expect?
Didn't say by Friday.
Is that going to be paid for this budget?
Yeah, expects what Friday?
Yeah.
Should be.
They've got a 60-day contract for 30 days worth of work, probably. That's probably why they have been in a hurry to get started, because they know they can finish it on time.
What's that?
Not my department.
Yeah.
It's not my budget.
So, Dave, on your building repair maintenance here, would that, I don't know what all is involved there, but would that be something that if you had to?
Well, okay, the building repair maintenance, what I did, I, I requested a new heating and air conditioning, you know, because the one we have is antiquated. I mean, and I feel that, you know, it would save a lot of money on energy if we bought a new system. I mean, because it's been there probably since the building's been there. And half the time it, you know, it blows out hot air when it's supposed to blow out cold air, and the cold air when it's supposed to blow out hot. You know, that's a request. I mean.
Yeah, that's something.
But I really think in the long run, it would save us money.
The work session where we first discussed this, John asked, who we have investigated those oil-fired heaters.
No, because I, that's, you know, that's not my strong point. I don't know anything about heating cool. I just got bids from, you know.
Yeah, a lot, they make those furnaces that use waste oil.
I got one in my shop.
Well, this is inside our, where we.
Man, Tom does a great job.
It's not the shop.
I don't think it pollutes.
Everybody's going to that in the automotive.
Your house?
No, in my shop in Fredericton. We had to pay to have our used oil pulled off. And now, between the oil that we change ourselves and our equipment, and the oil that our customers barrel up for us, so they don't have to pay someone to come get it, we keep our shop 75 degrees in winter.
So what's the interior environment? Is it?
It's a metal building.
No, but I mean, in terms of the air, is it clean air coming into the building?
Clean air?
Yeah, you don't have, like, soot or?
Oh, no. Nothing. You don't even, I mean, and it's, ours is a little loud, because we have a metal building with, with partial, no, partial to no insulation. So we get reverberation off of it. But that's really, we had a big upfront cost on it. But that was our only cost. It was the upfront cost. Dave, we're on your list here, and I'm sure it's there, I'm missing the training. You got a line item for training?
Um, that'd be safety, probably.
So that's all your safety supplies, training, everything. You know, I'm a big believer in, in that knowledge is value. The more knowledge of our people, the more valuable they are, and safety training and.
We, we, yeah, we are now part of the Missouri Risk Pool for our Workman's Comp, and they are very proactive on training. And so we'll have available to us online safety training that we could do in the shop. You just log on, you get the training. They've got, like I said, they have 600 modules and all sorts of stuff. So I think we're going to have a resource through our pool that we haven't had for training.
Actually, we go through MOLAP right now, and we've actually, we went through a 10-hour OSHA course. And we also went through chainsaw safety just recently. And we're, we've got our oil spill certification, chemical spill certification, and flag, flag safety, and there's one more, which, we go through MOLAP, and it's like 25, $35, something like that for us, too. Remember what it costs us?
$35.
35. And like I say, every time they have one in Cape, you know, a lot of times they'll send it, they got raw, or wherever. We don't go there. We go to Cape. So we've been at least four of them this year.
So do you have an annual plan for a number of training seminars, training hours for employees?
Well, we don't really have any actual training hours that we, we plan on. We go through a toolbox safety thing. We talk about stuff, and then I kind of do it as we go along, you know, and they leave it right down, you know, as we go. And, but like I said, when MOLAP has it, they send me the information, and usually Martin agrees with it, so.
I don't think I've ever turned you down.
No, you haven't. You've been good about that.
Excellent. But the difference with these other ones is, maybe we can.
Yeah, we can.
Get more, more information in there.
More proactive, instead of just taking what comes, planning for it, and make sure you schedule time for the guys and those kinds of things.
Dave, on your office equipment, what do you need?
Uh, I need a computer. My computer, as you see on this, that Moro Street, that was a typo, because I type it, and all of a sudden I'm sitting there waiting for it to come up. It's 10 years old, so, you know, when I type on it, I got to sit and wait for it to come up. I mean, I'm not a good typist anyway, but, you know, I'm like, this is ridiculous.
And then you said you have, like, 10% on the insurance, right?
Do I have an option?
10% on.
They can have. I don't think we have any computers here.
All right.
I can have one.
What about, what about them streetlights? We got to get that 75 value, you think, this year?
I have one of those parked.
Is that included?
No, no, the electric's different. That's, yeah.
I didn't think so.
Yeah, just, that's, well, no, that's also out of progress Parkway, whatever citizens takes care of, and all the streetlights around town.
Oh, okay. So that's not, that's not down, some of them are down there. They were great.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We've got some high-maintenance streetlights.
Yeah, that's what I was going.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah. You know, and Tom, for safety, which is, I apologize for this, because I just got this yesterday. I tried to get for our uniforms, I want to go with the high-intensity yellow, which we're supposed to, the ANSI two. And anyway, the guy just gave you the price, which we found out today is going to be like $200 a year or more. I didn't add that. I'd like to see if you guys, let me add that to the.
You're on the wrong record, you two men.
Well, I mean, it's $200, you know. I'll find it somewhere, but I mean, I'll.
Yeah.
Look for a safety, because I think it'd be, we got that orange stripes that were just, you know, that's not, it's not legal anymore.
You mean legal?
It's not, it's supposed to be ANSI two, and it's not reflective.
What's the requirement? Is there some state requirement that city employees have to wear something?
No, actually, city employees are exempt from, from OSHA. But we try to go by OSHA as much as we possibly can.
I'll tell you what'll happen. If you're not following OSHA regulations, somebody gets seriously injured or killed, you're giving the keys to the city.
That's why we try to go by OSHA rules as much as we possibly can.
All right. So.
But thank you.
I think the average citizen wants to feel safe in their community. They want police and fire service. I think the average citizen expects to get water when they open the tap, and expects their water to go away when they flush the commode or open the drain. I think the average citizen expects to have roads to ride. And, and I think everything else is kind of, no matter how important, we could justify it. I think those are the basic needs that most citizens will judge us by.
What the first?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they care about cities.
I don't think they care about you two.
They don't care if there's a city administrator. They don't care if there's a tourism industry.
The mayor.
The average citizen.
Yeah, all of a sudden, we.
Take everything away. Give me my police department, my fire department. I want roads, and I want water and zoo.
And sidewalks.
Yeah, I don't even sure about sidewalks.
Most people walk the street.
There are whole communities that have no sidewalk. By design, they don't have any sidewalks.
Yeah.
Where's that at?
I think that, you know, it's not like we're talking about what to do with extra money. It's going to come down to how we want to prioritize things. If we feel like there's such a priority that we must use 10% of the budget for capital, street improvements, then everybody gets a 10% cut. So we're going to lose things. To pay for something right now, we're going to lose something somewhere. We hadn't, we don't have money to shift around that's, that in a bucket. Anything that we determine, that we decide that, that we have to spend on streets and roads comes from somewhere else. So how much of that can our city stand is really what it comes down to. I don't see that we have waste in any of our departments where we're just throwing money away. So it's, it's, there's going to be pain involved if, if we go forward and try to save some street money. And maybe that's a decision we make. And maybe that's really what we should be talking about, people in our wards all the time. Hey, this is kind of what we're thinking. You know, if we did some street repairs, you got to realize, it's going to cost you over here for it. We're going to, we're going to hurt the street department, we're going to hurt the fire department, the parks department, everybody. And, you know, it's not, we don't have a good decision to make.
When you're making up a budget, and you're giving a budget to all the departments, why isn't there a place for capital improvement within that budget?
Well, right now, Teddy, we don't have it. So if you create it, we have to take it away in the budget.
Why? That's, I know that.
So again, what we always do, we pay for sins of years past, you know, that that was.
I mean, it wasn't never like that, or there was never a fund for capital improvement in the budget when you, when you did the budget?
I, that, last year, we did that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought we, we just, we carried some money over and.
Well, you, you did, but we.
And we had to designate.
We came in and said, here's the public works budget, and includes these roads. And there was a lot of discussion at this table about what roads should or should not be done. And we ended up with Porter Street.
Right, but we've never taken revenue and taken a percent of our revenue to say, this will always go toward road improvement.
You have not done that.
And that would be essentially what we'd be doing.
Right.
If I said we wanted a cross-the-board cut from every department to fund this line item.
Well, you know, what you got to remember, too, is that, I mean, I can cut some more, but like these sidewalks downtown, you know, we had, that came up, that wasn't in the budget. I mean, basically, I'm sorry you weren't there, but, you know, you guys kicked it out.
They're still not in the budget this year, and they're not on this list.
Yeah, and it came out of my budget this year.
And those, Dave, those things come out every year, right?
Yeah.
Something, out of nowhere.
Yeah, oh, yeah, out of nowhere. Then it basically comes out of my budget. So like I said, you could take it away, but where are we going to find it when we need it?
That's when you start planning.
Race tax.
Money trees. That's it. Instead of Inco's money trees.
Well, there it is. I'm going up on Marcus Street where I could get yours.
Well, and back to kind of what I said, citizens will not.
And they're right.
Hey, listen, you tell me to fix it, I'll fix it.
Until experience, the service reduction.
Exactly.
Nobody's going to do it until they're fixed, until they're suffering a little bit, or not getting what they think they should get.
I apologize. I need to go.
Dave, how did, how did the chip and seal work out for us last year? It was fairly economical to do.
Oh, yeah.
Chip and seal, if we can keep the county working with us.
And you have notices, everybody. You're drinking your water at your own risk.
Chip and seal is to preserve the streets. It's already basically still good. A lot of the streets, especially out of Lynn Drive, we did that, a lot of them roads were too bad. And that's why we're still, when we're out there with Sweeper, we're picking up rocks.
You couldn't be there on a street like that.
Like I said, another classic one, too, is chip and seal. Forgot about that one. But whenever you chip and seal, the first thing you do, you take the oil truck and go through, then you have your truck right behind, your, your rock truck right behind it. If you, if you let it turn brown, then it don't, you don't, don't adhere to it. So then you roll with a rubber tire roller, which we don't have. So basically, what we did, we just kind of covered it up. Usually, when a road's that bad and, and that cracked up, it's because of base failure you start with. I mean, we can, I mean, all you're basically doing is just.
So in your, in your opinion, chip and seal was not a good thing for us?
I think it's going to make it last a little bit longer, but it's, it's not a.
But, but we did, we didn't tick those roads where we knew there was a significant base failure. We only did the roads where.
There were some, but, you know, well, I got it, International subdivision, that, that road is just, it's just bad. I mean, there's no, there's no something, you know.
Just like what he put on, right?
The Almond, 10 pages.
Seems like it.
I expect 10 pages.
So that wouldn't be a good option for us. Tom was talking about not, maybe not doing a project this year, but we might be able to raise the money to chip and seal a few more streets.
Perp is, well, I've got a list, and Carl's got it on our computer, that, you know, of all the streets and all the, you know, the category, how we did them. And that's where I got, you know, a lot of these from, but which is, you know.
These are removed and replaced?
Yes.
How about the chip and seal? Once you got a chip and seal, just out of curiosity.
Yep, yep. It's all on there. And, you know, I brought up Progress Parkway. I mean, everybody's like, well, here's new, but you stop, they look at the cracks out there. I mean, if, that's the perfect road to be chip and sealing now, because it'll preserve it a lot longer.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we sealed them cracks out there three times, and how old's that road?
The, the average citizen driving down that road won't see that.
Exactly.
12 years, 13 years.
Yeah, about 11, 12 years.
Gee, look at this nice road. Why can't my road look like this?
You look at Rojer Street out there, that's just been done 2010. Those cracks all over Samwing Main Street. Cracks. That's the ones you want to, you know, want to preserve. Like LaFleur, that's why I haven't patched anything on LaFleur, because I was kind of waiting for you guys to make a decision what you want to do. Because, I mean, I'll, I'll patch it, but it's just, it's going to be a waste of money. It's just, that road was shot.
Yeah, so.
And it got worse, you know, since last year.
You, uh, okay.
And just like Point Base Drive. Last year, I figured it was like $10,000 for us to pour concrete to patch the bad spots. This year, we wanted another $5,000, because it's spreading out worse. I mean, the longer we go, the worse it's going to be. I know we don't have any money, but you don't.
Can you take a road and put a road base down and chip and seal it, and not asphalt?
You can, yeah, yeah.
But there are communities that, their roads are just chip and seal, and that's what they did.
It's called like a, basically like you grab a road, it's called a tug mill mix.
Right. They put a good base down and just chip and sealed it whole time.
Just out of curiosity, the county, help us out again? I mean, I think they would.
And the whole thing is, is that it was, so I thought it was economical, working with the county. Didn't they save us a bunch of money?
the county, didn't they save us a bunch of money?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But like I said, I just don't want you to get high hopes that it's gonna last another 10 years, whatever.
Well, I understand that, but wouldn't that be better than nothing?
Oh, yes, it'd be better, yeah, definitely. I mean, if that's all the money we have, that's our only option, we have to do that.
And, and we probably, I don't know, need to know how many streets are, you would consider eligible for chip and seal.
I've got...
And then we gotta talk the county into it, if it goes that way.
It's on Carlos' computer, 'cause my computer is not strong enough for that or whatever, I don't understand about it anyway, but anyway, she's got the printout.
You need daughter a new computer?
Yeah, he's got that in here. He's got it in here over his office.
I mean, I can get by with the one I have, I mean, if that's...
Well, you know, we can get you a pretty powerful computer, just replacing this, the computer for...
Yeah, I've got a monitor.
Five, for $600. $1,500 would be the whole package.
Yeah, well, it's up to him.
We don't want somewhere here. We don't, not in, not in, yeah. Yeah, I'll check, I'm gonna check over the welcome center, they may have an old one, should I ask that question?
That always helps.
Yeah? That's the one I was thinking of.
Lower down right now, thank you. According to the, sometimes, the minutes, yeah. They'd probably be down to 11 or 12.
So I say we need a list of chip and seal streets, because it looks like we're gonna be, looking like that.
Well, if we get that in this year's budget, there'd be just less carryover.
Well, we're not gonna get it done this year.
Are you, or were you talking about trying to get it done?
No.
We're gonna come for...
Get the county...
Next year's, yeah, yeah.
They, the county usually does it at the end of their, their season. We gotta fit it in between counties.
If you wait till next year's budget, they're, they'll be done, 'cause I think it was, what, end of August last year, first part of September, when we did it, and they wanted to quit earlier. They just, they waited another week to clean their stuff up.
County commissioners are very cooperative, their staff is not as, quite as enthusiastic about it.
All the boys, they, they like working with us.
Not that they don't like working with you.
Make motion to send county commissioners to Donut's meeting.
Well, I will, I will approach the county to make sure we, they're willing to provide the same level of support they did the past. They will give us the list of potential chip and seal streets, and then we can look at this.
Yeah, I went through last year, and put down like 2012, 13, 14, 15, when we, when we wanted to do our streets, you know, what we should do each year, you know, but that depends on the budget.
I can make you listen.
See what we're gonna do.
That's the bridge.
What's the bridge?
Yeah.
Well, you're, you're taking... Which, you're gonna take 260 while that...
Back there's the bridge.
So what I'm saying, you only, you're gonna make up 60.
I'm already in it.
They denied it.
I thought I was supposed to know something about that.
They actually, they ran here once, and we got in.
Got it. Okay, didn't know that.
Oh, no, actually, I got ahold of, I got a couple, 'cause I buy the oil.
Yeah.
Anyway, yeah, I called them up, they laughed, they said, you don't have to know. Well, we might have maybe a hundred dollars.
They worked, but they worked buying it.
Yeah.
That's ignorant.
You know it is, really, 'cause that oil...
So what's...
Well, I don't know about that, don't you?
Taking the percent.
I think personally, I think it's the first thing for you to look at the whole picture, talk to each one of them.
Well, we don't, we don't, they gotta get on, damn, they're compromising.
Well, we have to decide the percentage.
We have them written in ourselves.
Are we done?
Yes.
I bet you got more questions than ever made.
You know, the break room and...
Next meeting, what's our next meeting? Thursday night.
Next Thursday.
Before, before our regular meeting, we will have additional directors before you and after.
The 11?
No, next, next week. Next, next week.
Next week.
Not this Thursday, next Thursday.
And Dave will have given me the chip and seal information by then, so we'll be able to provide that to you for your consideration. Well, you know, at the end of last year, we thought we projected carryover $200,000. And while we weren't happy with that, we thought it was an adequate reserve, that someday we'd like to build it up some more, but we were satisfied with that level of cash. You know, and it's doubled that. At the end of the year, we have twice what we thought we were gonna have. So when we say we have to make up that $200,000, if you just harken back to last year's budget, when a $200,000 emergency fund was considered adequate or acceptable, you know, if you did that again, that's the $200,000, the $260 we're short. So it looks, you know, when you throw out the numbers, you go, oh my God, how are we gonna do this? But, but maybe it ain't quite as difficult as we thought it was gonna be, assuming you're willing to accept that $200,000 cash carryover fee.
It would mean you'd have to, you'd have to cut about 60, and try to find, and find money for streets on top of that, so, you know.
But I'm begging you guys, let me do some work out on Progress Parkway, that, I mean, not Progress Parkway, but the Point Base, that is terrible, I mean, that's, people shouldn't have to drive on that kind of road, and we got doctors always out there, it just, that's ridiculous, you know, and...
That's, that's, that $15,000, with us doing the work, because we've got the...
With us doing the work, yeah. But I mean, we gotta try, we gotta do something.
Projects like that, I think, are reasonable, and I, I don't think we're gonna get a, obviously, we're not gonna get a $200,000 or $300,000 street out of next year's budget. It's gonna be things like what you're talking about. It's gonna be smaller projects.
You know, and trust me, I mean, it's not gonna, it's gonna fix that part, but then, like I say, we just kind of continuously keep going, you know, you know, just add to it, 'cause it's gonna keep breaking down. From last year was $10,000, now it's $15,000 this year, 'cause like I say, more, more spots got, you know, got worse, so...
When you said that last time, my question, is it $15,000 this year because we didn't do anything last year?
Exactly.
Or would it be, if we had spent the $10,000 last year, would we...
It would probably be the same way.
Would be $5,000 this year?
Yeah, it'd probably be the same way, but, but like I say, that, that whole road just falling apart, it's brittle, and it just, concrete just wasn't, they poured it on top of mud, and it's just...
But is there any grants out there anywhere?
Not just for streets, unless it's some kind of economic development, there's Delta Regional, you gotta tie it to something other than just internal city streets. Gotta be tied to a project, or job creation, or something like that. Then looked.
Should we tie Marcus Street in and build this? If you're coming back?
Well...
It's job creation.
Yeah, what's, there's something called the but-for test, where you have to be able to say to the grant agency, but for this expenditure, these things would not happen. I think Belphez would be a difficult one to say, since they're closing in a month. All they've asked is to get some help with trash removal.
What time? Next six o'clock? Six o'clock, next Thursday?
And then after the meeting, off.
Yeah, plan on hanging around.
Next Thursday is that?
A regular board meeting.
It'll be second Thursday.
It's a work session, a regular board meeting.
Just so I know ahead of time, I can eat extra on Wednesday.
Yeah, Marcus, I'm, you know, the county keeps telling me you gotta do something with Marcus Street, that's the, that's the entrance to your community.
So, so when's our next payment coming, special roads?
It'll be their, their budget year, what, what?
January.
January, yeah.
So we gotta wait until next January before we...
They're only gonna pay for improvements on 4th Street. And we said, as long as we can hold on to the money until we build up enough to have a meaningful project, then, then that, we would accept that limitation.
I was thinking 3 and 4th Streets, if it went along.
They agreed on that.
I argued in favor of any street that brought people into the downtown business, but we, they argued that it has to connect a special road district to, road to another special road district road. It had to somehow connect to a special road district road, so 4th Street was the only one they could, their attorney said they should, should help us with.
It all connects, it depends on how you drive.
Yes.
That's the main way to get to the courthouse, that's what they'll look at.
You know, we have, we have kicked this thing around a lot with the special roads, you know, and I still have a good idea of how that is set up, and what our rights are. And does anybody out there, is there anybody out there that we can hire or get to find out exactly what can we do as a city? To get out of the special roads, or get money from them? You know, I, I don't know. We talked about it, but I don't think anybody's ever done any investigation, or we've always tended to rely on their attorney to tell us what they think it is.
Not entirely true. We have an opinion from our attorney that disagrees with their attorney.
So do we, so where do we go from there? To, to get these people...
Somebody's gotta file a suit against somebody, and the judge will have to decide.
I'm sure, I know they don't want to give up any money, because it's been free money to them for all these years, to realize that we, we are part of this. The city is part of this special roads. And we deserve some of that money back for roads, too.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not gonna disagree with that. I could tell you what they say in response to that, but I don't want to speak for them.
But what do we do?
They say the benefit, their statement is that the city residents benefit from what they do, and that they, we're already receiving the benefits of their maintaining the county roads that we also use.
Which we say they use our roads, too. And we get no benefit from them.
Well, we're getting 24, what?
14% or something.
Well, they, they, they're not committing beyond one year, but they...
They know we deserve more, and they're not gonna give us...
They basically said their budget, which will be... We said, we're gonna make the same request next year, they'll give us, they're gonna request more than that, and they're gonna give us what they're willing to give us.
The easiest way to get it fixed is get other people elected. Well, Dave, Dave said he'll run for special roads. Is he, is he able to?
Yeah, sure, why not? Just because he works for the city doesn't mean his, his, his rights have been taken away from him. That's only Toby.
They won't allow that with dollies, really.
Only got one.
Well, anyway, I just think it just goes on forever, and the city just wants.
I don't think he did.
I don't know, you stir the people up, either. I don't, it's, it's, it's a... The people in town don't really care. It's an, it's an education thing, because there, there's enough votes to get the people voted on to that, if people in town... Would take it seriously and... Would do it. And vote for it. But, I don't know, just don't have...
So how much money does it take to run a successful citywide election? I could, I used to know how much it cost in Jefferson County, countywide, but I don't, I don't know for the city.
Things about $5,000? Things about $5,000?
You can get enough literature out, and...
Oh, I don't know about that, I thought you meant what does it cost a city?
No, 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 I'm saying with the campaign, what is, for a successful campaign, about how many dollars does a person need to spend? Does anybody have a sense of that?
Well, I'd spend $500.
That's not citywide. You're the only one who's...
What's the limitations of, that you're only allowed to spend $500?
No, you guys get your money.
Yeah, you got...
Game player where it came from.
Sue, on this employee insurance, is that family plan? Is that just the worker, you know, like, or straight?
We, we provide...
I'm just asking about insurance.
We, we provide health insurance to every employee at no cost, and we imply, well, pretty much to employee, employee spouse, employee child, and employee family, those are four categories, with just a minor contribution from the employees. Less than 1% for the ones that, that pay. And if you'd like, we can provide that figure to you at our next meeting.
Yeah, with the cost going up so much, we may have to look at that percentage there, too. It's tough, it's just, I know, it's just tough.
It only ups at several times.
It's not, everybody's all...